We're gonna call the meeting of the October Planning Commission and Stoney Board of Adjustment to work. Our first order of business really is our minutes from our last meeting. There's some corrections made, Frank's name I spelled wrong, and avoiding that. Thanks again for correcting that. So we got a motion to approve? Second. All those at table? Our next victim is Josh Rock. And if you could give us a brief description of what you'd like to do?
Sure. So we have a house on Petal Lake that was flooded very recently. And we are asking the commission from the board to raise it straight up in the air. So we're literally gonna take the existing, it's sitting on C and U blocks right now. About ten of them. We're just taking those C and U blocks and turning it into concrete pillars and like straight up with the house. Not touching anything else on the property. We don't want any damage.
Are you gonna put a lighthouse on the top? Will it be in the same footprint as the old camp?
Yes, exactly the same.
What's the current height of the construction?
The current height right now is 23 feet.
You're gonna take it up to three?
Yes.
Have the Butters, property Butters, all been notified?
Yes.
I don't see anything about that.
I'm sorry, I just looked for that. It's on the back of one of them.
Is it?
Yeah.
You're in support of me doing anything that could be bad there.
I won't be able to see underneath.
See over that.
Is it the water now?
No.
Is this, that was my question, is this a seasonal or?
No.
Single-family residence?
Single-family residence. I don't know if it's classified as seasonal, we only use it as seasonal because it's for insulation.
Just in the summertime?
Yeah, we are using it. I'm sorry, can't upload this to the car yet.
I am, I did look it up, sure.
Well, I can't.
Does anybody have any questions for Josh?
So what's, you're gonna raise it up, what will be, what raised up, what's gonna be the foundation?
Concrete tears, they're gonna be concrete tears, so yeah.
Seep through it?
Okay. Yeah. We may use that, you know, we may put some screening on that.
Another just question for just for amusement.
Yeah?
How do you keep it like stable, like with the concrete?
So, it's a good question. My structural engineer made a couple recommendations, I have a steel that should go in there basically for the molding, for the, for that. I have another same question.
Thanks, McCross, where you say that?
I don't know if he's gonna, no, he didn't need it, he said the steel within the concrete was stiff enough and the way he's supporting it, with a couple of grating beams between it. He was, he was happy with the structural details, he loved it. I'm worried then how they're gonna raise it.
Then, then, these pillars that's gonna rest on there, they must have footings that go down.
Yeah, they do, they're going down, it's tricky because, yeah, it, structural engineer said it'd be nice to go down 48, but frankly, I'm not sure if he's gonna get it out. It's sort of a lot of, he has a lot of table, but there's some, he has some stipulations in his drawings.
Looks like him then.
Yes, that's right.
And how's all the plumbing gonna run to the septic system?
Well, there's just a single line right now that's going to it, so I'll just run that up one of the pillars and wrap it.
I hope you get to see the process. I hope you get to see the process.
I'm gonna try to take, you know, this timeline, they can say it'd be cool. There's only one guy inside of the room that does this, and I've got him locked up, locked up for a couple of weeks. So hopefully this goes through, but he does a lot of, he looked at it and said it's easy compared to something else that does. That's what he did, he said this is easy.
Do we have any more questions, Josh?
I don't know.
So hearing was closed? Do, oh, do we have any? Do you have anybody with you?
My wife.
And Scarlett. How's wife sounding?
Can I ask the board if this is gonna be, if there's any concerns or problems with this?
There's been, nobody has contacted us.
Okay, so do you, can I, can I ask you guys, because, and I apologize for the pressure.
We've been asking you if we had someone, I think, I think any of us would ask.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to block anything out.
It's going forward to me.
Yeah, well, it seems that way to me too, but you just never know.
This is delivered in session, as you probably know.
But the way it works is we deliberate after we've prepared all the hearings and all that.
Okay.
And typically you can't sign for 15 days once it's approved. If it's not approved, you can never sign. Oh, we'll let you know.
Okay.
And if there's any additional information that's required, we'll also let you know.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying not to push it off early, because I, like I said, again, I apologize for, I know it's not your problem, it's sort of mine, but I moved this guy, I'll get him back.
I'm sorry, we couldn't get you in there earlier.
No, that's, that's okay, part of it was not so hard decision was to do this, you know, once we came to the decision. Women.
Right, we can close, we'll close this hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in, Josh.
Yeah.
Nice seeing you again. Our next victim up is, who wants it, Andrew or?
I'll raise my hand.
If you could give us a brief description, and this is on the grand biggest. Personal?
Yes. So I'll start by introducing myself, my name is Andrew Tardy, an architect at Berthi, and I'm brought in that, Principal Architect of Berthi. And Kevin Ward, Engineering Ventures, civil engineer for the project, and we're representing the Rubber Eats Trust at 8464 Vermont 3100. Just wanna start off by thanking Mike, and also Jan for all of your assistance in getting through this process and recommending that we sit in front of you to discuss the project, so thank you for your time. At Mike's suggestion, we had a few supplemental materials, so that we were asked to provide, so we've prepared these out for you. One of which is an additional plan that has impervious coverage, that we talked about. And then there are also a few renderings that were requested of what we were proposing to do. So these are the supplemental in addition to what we've presented.
I like pictures.
So for members of the public as well. So I'll, I'll speed from here so that we can run through our presentation, which is not very long.
Is that presentation what's in your hand?
This, there's a couple additional materials here that we could also share with you as well. So we, we weren't sure who had an opportunity to visit the site, so we just wanted to take you through, just to orient you on the property at 8464, which is on Woodwood Reservoir, it's right up the road. And the existing property, this is a view from Route 100, looking up at the existing camp. And the project is proposing to have a change of use from an existing camp to a single-family residence. And because it's in the shoreline over Lake District, and plus the change of use is why we are in before you today. So this is a view looking up at the red cottage that's existing, with some additional views of the property looking out towards the lake. Which we can always switch back to with any questions.
There's two buildings of this site, right? Or is it just one?
So this property, as we'll see in the site plan in a moment, is only at 8464, is only the red, is only the red building. And the neighbor's property is, is the adjacent, is on an adjacent parcel. So we're, just wanted to orient you with the project, and then we'll ask you to walk you through the existing conditions of the site.
Great, so yeah, the, this is the survey, the plot, the subject, red cottage is right here in the middle of this parcel. Which is abutted by Route 100 to the west, and the Woodwood Reservoir to the east. And the cottage you noted, Ray Longwood 100 is offset the parcel to the south, and then another property to the north. It's largely wooded, especially to the north and to the east, succinct slopes down to the lake. The cottage in the middle here is a two-bedroom cottage. There's a small, we think, that's out back, which we looked at, had a one camera. There's a well out front, the well is shared between this cottage and the one on the adjacent property. And I think that's, that's pretty good. There's, in terms of setbacks, the front setback is 60 feet from the center line of Route 100. The side and rear setbacks are 25 feet. And what we've shown here, the, as you probably know, the shoreline setback was increased from 75 to 100 in the recent rewrite. What we show here is what the existing setbacks are to the cottage, which is a little 76 to the south and 55 to the south. And so that creates, what we show here is the proposed setback area within which the, this is what they're known as. Did you want me to keep drawing, okay. A couple things to point out, so you can see here in the center is the single-family home. This corner, it aligns with the existing corner of the cottage. Couple things that are different, the house moves towards, grows a footprint towards Route 100. The old leaching pit is removed and new leaf field proposed on the slope. It's further from the Woodwood Reservoir. We met with Terry Shearer from the state, got some test pits, it's great granular soil, it's a lot to be examined. And this, this design, you know, meets the state requirements, and I do have an email from Terry that would request all I know, a condition would be approval from the state. They're gonna hold off on submitting a permanent application, and so the, you know, they totally have approval for the actual building. If this would be helpful, this is an email from Terry Shearer, in which she notes that the designs meets his requirements. And I think the only other thing to point out then, and discuss a little bit, is Andrew and I have been in touch with the state regarding the state shoreline. Which is a sense of permit and in great part overlaps with the requirements of the town to protect the lake and shoreline. Retain as much wooded canopy as possible, and limit the impervious area. And this exhibit here shows that, in blue, impervious area is about, let me say, 17.8% of the total lot, which is going to be the limits of 20%. And that does include some access to the neighbor's garage, and there's a small boundary encroachment of that neighbor's house on the parcels. Included all of that in the lot coverage. I think that's, that's it.
Yeah, so and also at Mike's request, in addition to the floor plans that we provided as part of the submission, which we, what we gave you today. We were asked to give a couple of views of the proposed design to help orient you with the footprint on the site. So this is an aerial view looking from above, same site plan showing the roof, the roof line of the building here, and the driveway, the existing driveway coming in. And because of the location of that new septic that's on this hillside, we're trying to keep the driveway as far to the north as we can to also not be approaching onto the neighbor's drive and access, knowing that we have the maintained parking area here, but also have comfortable parking to be able to get into the garage and have a, a single parking space outside the house. And this is a, this is a view similar to the original photograph looking from Route 100. That, with the driveway coming up, and a, coming up to a garage and a parking area here on the right. And a two-story single-family residence with this view oriented out towards, towards the lake. The second view is looking back from Woodwood Reservoir, out from the water looking up the hill, with the neighbor's house on the left and the proposed residence on the right. These are the floor plans that were part of the submission that were in the packet, which showed all the area requirements that were requested as part of the, the application. The first floor plan with a garage, living dining kitchen, and exterior porch. A two-bedroom on level two with an exterior porch and bath and office, and then storage in the basement. So that's an overview of the project, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for us, and we can look back at any slides and see if they can be used for us.
Do you remember, I forgot your name already, I'm sorry.
It's Deborah. Deborah Nasel. I own 846.
Right next door.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
One of the questions I have, and I have identified in all of the documents that you have, you have identified where the drill well ends. Is it wanting to stay there?
I can answer that, we're gonna work with the state, Terry Shearer, to see if it can stay there, or if we'll need to re-drill a well, because it's a little close to the proposed house footprint. And if we do re-drill the well, it'll still meet any setbacks from leaf fields and still provide service to your house.
I say soon you have deeded rights to the well, excellent.
Yeah.
And what about the encroachment, is that in the deed too?
It's a legend.
It says apparent.
It's, pardon?
It says apparent on all these prints, and it's a, we'll leave it as apparent.
What does apparent mean?
What does apparent mean?
Means that we can do about it, because it's existing.
I mean, my dad built that addition, that was a bedroom for them as they aged. And he owned all of the property. Submitted his request to the town, had it approved to build that little tiny addition. And there it goes. My sister and I were given the property upon the death of my parents. The building is there. The land was walked, it wasn't surveyed when everyone purchased, when they purchased the property. And then it's the apparent encroachment, but it's a building that's been there since the eighties.
So that was my next question about the survey, when was the survey done?
The survey, they had a survey in 2015, and then they had another survey in 2018. I had a survey, but it was not given to the county or the deeds or anything such as that because it was undetermined. Such as a tree that has a red paint mark on it that's looking consistent with it. And the road in the 1967, when my house was built and the camp was built, four-way cottage, was built in 65. That road, this road, Route 100, was dirt. Today, it's pavement. I could park my car when the road was put into pavement beside the road at the garage on these prints. But the road, when they put in the pavement road, pushed it this way, or the other way. They pushed it the other way, because the road as it was dirt was closer, because they couldn't even put a garage there. Garage wasn't put in till my parents retired. And then they made a pavement. But it, we never, it wasn't a survey, not purchased, it was a walk.
It was a walk over phantom.
Tree with red marks.
And now, post-a-purchase, we have an encroachment.
Yeah, if I could provide just testimony on this as well, I think it is important to note for the board that from the time that we started working with the owners of the property, there was an acknowledgement of this encroachment that they are aware of, there's zero contesting of this at all. They made us well aware, aware of the encroachment, it would make us well aware of the shared well and the deeds, and that has all been part of the planning consideration of the process.
So now, so if you're not gonna tear down the ground?
Absolutely not. And that's not on our property anyways.
Is this a house, I'm sorry, another house. This, this new survey, is this on my lot out here?
I don't see the recording still on it, but.
Like, of the house itself, is that a walkout basement, or is the basement totally below grade?
So the, because of shoreline, we, so we are unable to manipulate the grade to the south and to the east of the, of the proposed residence. So it is a full, fully invented basement.
All the way around.
That's right.
So you're gonna do an excavation as well?
That's right.
There's, there's a, I don't know if it's a full basement, but there is, there's some kind of crawl space under it.
Yeah. There's a little box, you open up the door, go down and crawl around. I've gone down there with a porch to fix some of the plumbing and things like that. But there's mics running around, it's a dirt floor, it's a journey.
And when we did the test pits, the, when we were excavating, dug a few pits around the house, and it's sand all the way down. Which I was surprised at, I was expecting the last.
Slipping all around the lake.
Yeah. So we went back and a couple of pictures where you showed your aerial view. This house is nicely embedded in trees. Is that a Mers conception, or is that what you planned on showing once the house was fully built? I mean, how are you gonna preserve trees that close to construction?
Oh, in terms of its proximity to the, to the trees? I think that's a great question, and really, there's a lot of strategy involved, certainly with the builders of the project, in terms of how a tree perfection can happen. And also, the stabilization of your soils during the excavation process. We're not quite at the level of having to build our own work to be able to do that. But shoreline, as Kevin was alluding to, we've spoken in exchange contact with Misha, the engineer, who has advised, knowing that there, that there is some removal of tree, trees from some dimension from the house emerged at, at the excavation moments, that we would be replanting in order to repopulate what has come out or have to be removed. And preferably on the lakeside to help with the stabilization of those steeper slopes. So I think that we're, we'll have to do our best to work with the state to, to offset any impact of that.
Those trees are popular birch, doing, birch lasts about 60 years, so they're. Should be 40 by 50.
Probably a year or so.
There's a few people related to that, that somebody would have a birch or.
I have a few questions. Forgive me if I'm ignorant.
This is my girl.
My name's Ali. So I had a, I was concerned about the tree as well. And I don't know if you're aware of this prop, like if you, I mean, you probably seen it, it's a steep hill. Does this require bulldozing the hill? So like, how do you put a two-story house on top of a knoll? Like, are you like leveling things out? I'm trying to understand how this affects the area that we live in. My mom lives near here around, this is a year and a half's proposed construction project. I'm worried about her peace at the lake. She gets tired to live there, and now, and we weren't able to keep the other parcel. However, it's kind of heartbreaking to see 300 years of genuine history turn into this, like, modern 1.75 billion dollar project. So I'm concerned about the property affecting my mom's path. I'm concerned about my mom's peace of mind at the knoll at the lake. I'm concerned about water runoff, I'm concerned about sun, I'm just, I don't know the science of a two-story building. But does it affect, does it affect our house? Do you know what I mean? Like, so I have a lot of questions that I don't understand. And I don't know if that's relevant here, I don't know if it's a side convo, I'm not sure. But I, I'm just concerned about this project. In fairness.
So if we were to prove this permit, like during the construction phase, like we, we'd have to stipulate that, but access wasn't interrupted to the garage? I'm sure you all thought of these kind of things, because it's a small skating area for construction.
And one of the other things that is required, is any type of runoff from any new construction has to be diverted. Has to get out of the ditch in Route 100, or back down into the lake. And you just can't build a house and have runoff to on the neighbor's guy. Especially where that garage is liquefied.
So close, so trouble.
I think, can I answer a few questions? They not answered, but I can, I can definitely talk to you about it. I think you should be concerned, because obviously your mother's living there, and it's exactly what you said, you wanna have like a good neighbor. And you will have disruption for a while, it just kind of goes with the nature of learning something. I think, you know, the biggest part of like what we wanna be is good neighbors. There's, there's a lot of regulation that's already gonna take care of a lot of what you get passed about in terms of runoff and grading and erosion and things like that. That's all part of what we would have to do anyway in terms of regulations around construction, mostly excavation. But, you know, building a project in that type of spot is very complicated, because there are a lot of people coming and going all the time. A lot of what we would wanna do is have a meeting with you, before we started. Odds are that our company would also be building a project, Berthi is an architecture firm and building company. I started the architecture firm 28 years ago, so I have a lot of experience in working with neighbors and knowing how important that is to the peace of mind of everybody. Because nobody wants to disrupt your life, and I, there's a part of it that in terms of like your taxes going up. And I, there's a part of it that in terms of like your taxes going up, I, I don't have any control over that part of it. It's kind of, you know, a little bit of it is out of everybody's hands and then the owners wanting to do a project of this size and this scale. There's a lot of sensitivity that we have in designing a project like this. We're trying to be respectful to the context, which is your house, the lake and how people perceive it from the lake, from the road and all other sorts of things. But there's a lot of comfort that I hope we can bring to you while we're doing it because I can't say that it's not going to be disruptful. There's a lot of things that we can talk about in terms of like being quiet after a certain hour, like arriving at a certain hour. There's a lot of like that kind of stuff that we're sensitive to. We definitely don't want to like block you into your driveway and you have to like knock on our door and say, who's got the red truck, you know? Move that thing out of the way. This, I think, the only thing that I can tell you today is that we, we, we are super sensitive. We're, we're up in Richmond, Vermont. We are a local company basically. We've done work in Plymouth before. But we want to be a good, a good neighbor to you while we're building it. And the people that will eventually live there and be there, they're great people. I think there's a lot of community building that we can do along the way. But the, the biggest thing is if you have any difficulty along the way, you can talk to me, you can talk to anybody, but I'll, I can give you my name and we're always available. It, it's painful to sit through a year and a half worth of construction. I've had to do it at my place and it's one of those things when you realize that part of the property was sold off and now you don't have control over it. It's a bummer. Yeah, and it's nothing that you really want, but maybe somebody had to do it along the way. So we're, we're just gonna try to be like a good neighbor along the way. Finally answered like one out of your 10 questions, I'm sorry, but most of it.
No, I, yeah, I appreciate it. It's, I kind of, I know you've probably been working on it for a while. This is kind of newer. This is new, a little newer for us.
Yeah.
Um, and it's a big project. Like, it's a, that's big.
There's definitely some scale to it that we're trying to maintain with you as a neighbor and to the lake. I think a big part of what we're ultimately trying to do is the jungle of satisfying our client's program.
Right.
Satisfying like our architectural aesthetic around the lake and the sensitivities in the context of that lake. And it's that fine balance of like trying to find a way to win for everybody. And it's a, it's a great project because the owners are paying professionals to be cognizant of all these things that you're talking about. Our company, the building company has been in business for 40 years. Kevin owns Engineering Ventures. We're, we're all like a very high level of expertise around doing the project at that scale.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't expect any less. They seem pretty like on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's just, I just am concerned about looking out the window. Instead of seeing trees, we see a, a two-story house. Like, it's, but it's out of our control, I guess, so.
The best part of the whole thing is that the real view is at the, at the rest of our things.
My family, as Elisa mentioned, has been in this lake, in this man-made lake, um, but up here in this property for almost 300 years. I'm the last quarter acre of my family. So that's why this means the most important to us is the integrity of property. I'm, I'm thrilled that this is a fancy house and it's nothing I could ever even think of. But it's so incredible and my parents would have just been ecstatic to see something like this proposed. Um, and so fancy, we'll call fancy because that's not always the comfort. Um, but I just, I want the integrity of the lake, the consideration of the wildlife, um, everything to be considered. And I think it will be unconfident of your expertise and longevity in your expertise. Um, I'm confident in the, I don't think Catherine and Andreas would do anything to harm the lake. They've been very good and conscious and I love it because they enjoy it so much. And I, I'm thankful for that. So we're just overall concerned for the, making sure everything is fine. It's already roving on the hill from the torrential rains we've had. Um, so it's just, there's a lot of thought that goes into this. And then there's my house. Does any of your construction materials come over to me? It's my house, you don't compare it with to that.
Kevin is, it's a legend, so there's a lot of grading around the house that might improve the situation that you have right now. Because all of our intention is to get the water away from the house, away from you, put it in the right spot.
Yeah.
So there's going to be that improvement that you'll see and hopefully appreciated at some point. But it, it will definitely affect you in a positive way.
The only other thing I would add is, I think you mentioned about sunlight. And I think since you're to the south of the house, I don't really see any access to light impacting your house, so.
I know one that sends out and what side of the house to go on.
Trying to get to it or get away from it?
Oh, both. Thank you for that.
So where is the owner? Why is he here?
What is the, is the, what's the purpose of that question?
Who's gonna live in the house?
Well, the owners are going to live in the house.
Typically, why, why are they here to defend a project and say this is mine? Is this gonna be your year-round residence? Or is it gonna be a cellar, just a place for them to come every open?
Well, it's.
It's a important question. And I just, that's not something to ask, I think, answer. My preference is the owner should be here. Anytime we get these type of things, the owner's here. So if somebody's gonna build this type of project, I would expect the owner to be present to defend it and give their desire of why they're doing it, not through an insubordinate.
Maybe that should be part of a requirement then.
It's, it's, it's not a requirement, but it'd be nice to have that. So, but I'm just saying.
I can't speak with them while they're not here. They, they're, they're busy people and they're paying us as their representative and I think we're.
We're all busy people. I run, I run the main business in this, in this, in the town. So I'd like to serve.
I think there are needs of them to want to be here for personal good. It's not a requirement though.
It's also as a person who lives in this town, I'd expect that somebody to say, if you're doing this type of project, you ought to do it best, please present yourself to the community. You're right, it's not a deed, but it would be something that would be proper and decent.
I think their investment into the community is going to be proper and decent well beyond them being here today. I think that.
That's okay. That's your opinion. I will leave it there. Okay, I, I have built condos in Boston, okay? A lot of playful property in Boston. But anytime I do something like this, I have to send my reps to these meetings. I front, I have attorneys, my architects, my engineers with me, but I have a stone frozen forever. Now that's just professional, listen to me. My next question is, how long is this project gonna take? A year and a half? You said, is that the estimated construction?
That is the estimated time of construction.
And we're talking about run-off. Did you pick a builder yet?
Well, I had said that it's a potential that Birdseye might be building this project, which is. It's called Birdseye. It's a custom home building company in Richmond. We have been in business for 40 years.
So this is a modular type home?
No.
It is.
It's a custom home building.
It's a custom. And where is, what's the state right of way up? Is it 35 feet? Sixty, sixty feet. So where does that run into this property now, part?
Yeah, I'd be happy to clarify, but the setback is 60 feet from the center line of Route 100. The right-of-way is shown there. Actually, you can find the monuments. It's actually not parallel to the road itself, which might have something to do with the original condition of Route 100. But you can see it on that plan there.
That's the state.
This is the state right way right here. It's actually not parallel to the Route 100. But it's on, it's on the survey plan and it's on the existing conditions.
I have no questions, Mr. Henneman.
Can I just take a comment?
My name is Bruce. Not comfortable.
Uh, is there, you still want to ask a question?
I don't have any.
You can ask a question.
Okay. I mean, we own a property in Plymouth. But I just, I've seen Birdseye's work. They've done a beautiful house in Stratton and they have a website that's very substantial. And I know a little bit about their work just in passing and they do really nice custom homes.
The one question I guess I have for you is, you own both parcels at one time. When you sold one, the driveway comes through the other. You have a deed right-of-way through the driveway to the owner? Okay.
I have one inquiry. It's probably not even her name, but you stated you were gonna think about a new well. Does that mean that the existing owner next door there would get the existing well totally in their name?
No, the reason to do a new well is, is the existing well is about five feet from the edge of the proposed, proposed house and the stable wants at least ten. So they may be forced to drill a new well.
And that would become a shared?
Shared wealth to both houses. Yep. And the other one would be captive in the van.
Is this, is the septic shared?
The septic is not shared in, in existing conditions or existing conditions. They're separate.
Would you maintain a path that leads down to the, there's a path, I see the path, that leads down to the lake?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. So there will be a path to the lake and the, the clients have expressed interest in having that. And we've coordinated with the Shoreland engineers who have given us the specifications as to what we need to follow in order to minimize the impact for erosion and runoff. And we'd see as an opportunity to potentially improve anything that, that could reuse or require any kind of additional stabilization. So there was, there will still be a path to the lake.
Will it be natural or like stairs? It says progress, so I'm sure you're brainstorming.
Exactly. We're still in that brainstorming phase.
Just as a side note, my dad rides on more all the way down that. He's not all the way to the bottom and then he'd come back up.
If you know how steep it is.
I'll get it on my dad and go up.
No, you've done that before, that's evident.
No, I've never Simon tipped over yet. No, but I figured out I'm not tipped over, but it's sometimes a little scary, so I get you.
Anything else? I don't have any questions. Oh, what color you would paint it?
I think a lot of what we want to do is make it blend in as much as possible so there's no color shade set, although it's natural to clean up with the leaves that are sitting here.
So we can close our jury. This, and can I get your email or? This side, thank you a little. And thank you for coming in tonight and answering all our questions. And thank you for the wonderful package. It was, made things quite clear. Appreciate it. We're gonna close this hearing, this meeting. If there's anything more that we're gonna require, obviously the Terry Shear's final report and the conditional use will be based on septic system improvement. You do have one requirement from the Department of Fire and Safety to have proper under insulation. It's somewhat new, self-certified, you didn't roll the test. I'm sure you've run into it before. So that is required. Has nothing to do with the town. We're gonna close this hearing and thank you for coming in tonight. And we'll let you know the outcome of our decision within a couple of days.
Thank you very much, everybody.